With that, we will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, our citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. We have resolutions D through G. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We have one protest, item H, protest of personal property taxes for Nebraska Medical Center, multiple locations. And with us today is Mr. Mike Goodwillie from our assessor's office.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you today?
Good, how are you?
This, I'm good. This is fairly straightforward. The, this involves four different personal property accounts, none of which filed their personal property on time this year by the May 1st of 2022 deadline. When that happens, we send out what we call a penalty assessment letter, which says to them, we're going to estimate your value and there's also going to be a statutory penalty imposed of a percentage of the taxes due. What happens often and happened in this case is eventually the entity files their personal property return, albeit late. When we send them their penalty assessment letter, the letter specifically says there are really only two grounds to protest the penalty or to get the penalty waived. One is if it was incorrectly imposed and the other is if it was wrongly calculated. If you look at the materials in the protest from Nebraska Medicine here, they allege neither of those two things. What they're simply saying is administratively, we couldn't get good help or we dropped the ball or something like that. The dog ate my homework, I'm not sure what. But the fact of the matter is, these guys filed their return late. There's a mandatory statutory penalty and they haven't alleged any sufficient grounds to, to remove the penalty.
All right, any questions or comments? What is the will of the board?
Motion to deny protest.
Any, is there a second? There is a second. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to one. Commissioner Boyle voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Executive session, there is no need. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Before we get started, I do want to recognize a group of young people we have with us today and invite Val from UNO to come forward and tell us a little bit about this group. We've been, had the pleasure of having, I think you're the third group this year? Fourth group?
This will actually be the fourth.
Fourth, fourth group this year. So, we're excited to have you and let's hear about them.
Val McPherson, 6415 Glenwood Road, Omaha, Nebraska. First of all, I want to once again thank the county commissioners for another warm welcome for one of our international delegations. As you just pointed out, this is the fourth one that I have had the pleasure to bring before you this year. Three of them have been the YSLI program and this is one of those. That is the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative. The other one was a similar program called Bold, which had young professionals from the Bosnia-Herzegovina part of the world. This group, like the previous YSLIs, are a result of our embassies in their Southeast Asian countries recommending them for this civic engagement and leadership program. They are here for five weeks and have a variety of activities planned, both on campus and off. As I have said before, and I'm more than glad to say again, this is modeled in terms of recruitment after the State Department's International Visitor Leadership Program, which is the oldest and most successful citizen diplomatic professional program. It started in 1940 and besides all of the other professionals that have been alumnis of that program, over 600 of them have gone on to be president or prime minister of their countries. And as I said, the vetting process for the IVLP program and this YSLI program are very similar. So there is a very high probability that you have before you a future president or prime minister of one of their Southeast Asian countries. And I believe that you had asked earlier that they might come forward.
Yes.
So would, would everyone begin to form a line here and one by one, give your name, your country, and a brief description of what you are and will be up to?
Hi, everyone. My name is Azida. You can call me Azzi and I'm from Malaysia. I recently graduated from a course called English for Intercultural Communication. And in my undergraduate degree, I studied critical thinking as well as different cultures in, in different countries. And in the future, I plan to tackle systemic privilege in my own country. I worked with nonprofit throughout my undergraduate years. We focused on disaster relief humanitarian missions. And recently, I started my own nonprofit, which is to help youths to equip themselves with critical thinking skills so they are able to humanize complex issues when it comes to whether or not we should abolish the penalty and so on and so forth. And I also plan to help, to serve the communities in my country. So in the future, I plan to work in the third sector where I work with nonprofits and also before I delve into the world of politics. That's all from me. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome. Can, can you do me a favor and pull those microphones just together? There you go.
This is okay?
Yeah.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Narisha. I'm from Singapore. Thank you so much for having us here today. So I'm a recent political science graduate and I'm particularly interested in looking at how I can break barriers of exclusivity for young undergraduate scholars in ASEAN. And I'm also really interested in looking at how I can forge more cross-cultural linkages and knowledge-sharing linkages between Asia and the US as well. So thank you again for having us. Really excited to watch the proceedings.
Thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, all Commissioners. So my name is Radha and I'm from Cambodia. I'm a political science and international relations graduate. Currently, I'm working at the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and International Cooperation Cambodia as a liaison officer for the ASEAN Foreign Missus Meeting and ASEAN Summit in the upcoming months and next month. And I'm happy to be here today and thank you very much for giving us the opportunity. Like always, shout out to Val and all Wisely Program teams for this arrangement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Okay. Good morning to all Commissioners. My name is Razman Winurhan and I'm from Malaysia. And I'm taking mathematics with economics. And currently, I'm very passionate to develop economics in my respective rural areas to make sure that we can move forward to have a better Sabah. I meant to, better, not Borneo, actually. So I think I want to thank all the Commissioners for having, for having us today. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
All right, my name is Wei and I come from the little country of Brunei Darussalam. Quite, just a small salted net on the northeast of Borneo Island. In August 2022, I graduated with a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology and Anthropology. I did have a brief experience in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs in the Department of Multilateral Cooperation during the year where Brunei was the ASEAN Chair. Currently, however, I am actually a research associate at a local non-government organization called Global Awareness and Impact Alliance, where we strive to empower thought and generate change. How we do that is basically provide a safe platform to talk about any difficult issues under the roof. And that can be involving the societal issues that we experience back home, but also on the international scale. So as an, so as a research associate, my role or my research area of interest is particularly on conflict resolution, particularly in ASEAN. I've written a paper on the South China Sea and also have written about Brunei Korea's multilat maritime security cooperation. In the near future, I hope to be pursuing my master's degree in international relations, hopefully in Singapore. And eventually, I think my end goal is to work in a research think tank where I can help, well, I hope to serve in track two diplomacy. So very thankful for you, for, for us to be sharing this session today. And I look forward to hear more for what's happening in this morning. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Thank you and good morning, all Commissioners. My name is Nabhan. I'm come from Indonesia. And now I'm taking part at, in a, in a organization, socio-religious based organization, the biggest in Indonesia called Muhamadya. And I'm also creating and act as the CEO of a small, small media startup back in Indonesia called IB Times ID focusing on democracy, sustainability and equality. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Big Ni and I'm from Vietnam. I graduated in, from the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam, majoring in international communication and cross-cultural media. I'm currently working as a public affair executive at O'Guevie, Vietnam. Actually, I'm the first to graduate from college in my family of many, many generations. So it is my special interest to provide more access to education for growth, especially those in the same provincial area as I. Thank you for having us and thank you Wisely Program team for this amazing opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. First of all, thank you so much for having us today. We are very much honored to meet you all. By the way, I'm Jefferson Hilario. I, I was named after President Thomas Jefferson. But my, but you can call me Jep. I'm from the Philippines. And I'm currently working right now as the project lead of a youth, youth engagement program of a local, a for, local pharmaceutical NGO in our country called Unilab Foundation. So what, what we are currently doing is we are empowering the youth to become advocates of public health because way back February 2019, we recently passed the Philippines Universal Healthcare Law. And as of now, we have the implementing rules and regulations, but the gap is in the implementation of that law. So right now, what we are currently doing is we are bridging this gap through the youth and with the youth. And recently, we also created this, established this local NGO called Positive Youth Development Network, in which I am currently the chairman of the board. And this organization aims to build the network and connections between different youth-led organizations in our country to, to standardize the measure on how we, we measure the impact of their programs and also doing some programs when it comes to children and youth engagement. So yeah, that, that, that is, that, those are my special interests right now. So again, thank you so much for having us and we are looking forward to the next proceedings this morning. Thank you.
Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, all Commissioners. First of all, thank you very much for having me here and my fellows here. First of all, I would like to introduce myself. My name is, my name is Game. I'm from Thailand. Currently, I'm a third-year student in the School of Law in Jhulanggon University, Bangkok. My special interest is about state-led youths. Because I come from the province, the little province in the east of Thailand, which have maybe more than 5,000 state-led youths who don't have accessibility to, to study, to the healthcare, to the better quality of life like the other people. So that's why I come here to the US for, for run my project and find a solution to help them in my province. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Sawadhi kha. Monica from Thailand. I'm not a law student, actually. Right now, I am an English teacher. I work as Thai government. And also, I would like to see change in my country. Thank you, YSLI, and thank you for having me today.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Miller from Thailand. I'm the political scientist of Jhulanggon University and I'm the law student of Lhamkhon University. Currently, I'm working at the small NGO group, which are Than Thieh and Tam Than Man Phin, which aim to empower the transgender rights in Thailand. And also, thank you for having us today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Douglas County Commissioners. I am much honored to meet you today. My name is Ahmad Amsha Binamak Findi. I'm from Malaysia, a lawyer by profession. I just graduated from the National University of Malaysia. We've raised our flaws with honors. And currently, serving the Malaysian Muslim youth movement as the legal first escort. So my special interest would be criminal justice. And I'm much honored to meet Commissioner, my friend today, who I see be working on criminal justice here in the Douglas County area. So I'm really going to describe how much I much honored to meet all of you today because it's my first district or even county council proceedings that I attend. Because previously, back in Malaysia, we doesn't have the same opportunity for us to meet the Commissioners or even district council members there. So looking forward to follow closely to today's proceeding and thank you very much. Much obliged for the opportunity given by Wisely Team.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, all Commissioners. My name is Esther Natalia. You can call me Esther. I'm from Indonesia. Actually, now I am a law student. I'm a final year law student and I'm taking business law as my concentration. I'm really interested in the intellectual love of property, which is, I'm working on my thesis in that topic. I'm also a content creator on TikTok. Yeah. And now I am a founder of a, a really small platform in Indonesia, which is called Productive Kui. I facilitate like 26 program for students all over Indonesia from Sabang until Marokai. And I've been working in this platforms two years and a half and with 55 members. And I would really love to share about education, women, environment and also gender equality. Thank you so much for having us here.
Thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me clearly?
We can hear you.
All right. Good morning again. I'm Chan from Cambodia and currently I am a senior student of teaching English as a foreign language. My special interest is education. And right now, I am a volunteer as a club leader in American Corner, Cambodia, which is supported by US Department. And our program is supposed to work with the youth, which mean we collect all the youth to provide them the social skill and then we also plan the young leaders to serve their community. Thank you for warm welcoming and thank you for having us today. And I would like to shout out to Val and also Wisely Team for providing us the great opportunity to be here. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, all Commissioners. I'm Jeffrey from Timor-Leste. Currently, I'm a senior student from law and I'm working on my thesis, particularly on constitutional law. So my special interest is I would like to work in justice because in the last two years ago, I was working closely to the, our senators and our government members. Particular, I was working at the legislative members. So this is, uh, uh, helped me how I can grow more my skills, my knowledge in terms of justice. So in the next five years, I would like to be a judge because in our country, based on our statistic that we released last two years, there is, we only have 33, 33 lawyers in our country. So I would like to work on, I would like to be a lawyer in the next five years. And thank you very much and thank you very much for all the Wisely, all the Wisely teams that organized this event. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Magandang umaga. First off, it's a great honor for me to stand before this august body. I am Joalco Kin from the Philippines. I recently graduated with a bachelor's degree in accountancy, but I was called for a greater purpose. Last elections in the Philippines, I was able to make history as the youngest elected municipal councillor in our province. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Because I, I am a strong advocate of young people taking up space in the field of policymaking and government. Because with the complex issues facing our society in our country today, we need diverse set of young people who can bring in fresh and innovative ideas at the table. And that is exactly the core reason why I am here in the US. Because in the first 100 days of, of me in public office, I, I came to realize that there is, there is still a lot to be done and I still, there is, there is still a lot that I don't know. That is why I want to benchmark and adopt effective legislative models being practiced here in the States. Because we all know that US is one of the gold standards when it comes to policymaking and discussion of issues. So yeah, I am looking forward to learn with you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Magandang umaga. Good morning. I'm Shai, also from the Philippines. So I am a business student and at the same time, a lead convener of an NGO called Helping Humans Initiative. So we empower the youth and we also work on reducing inequalities among indigenous groups in my country because we are very rich of that in the Philippines. So thank you so much for having us here. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Sabaydi. My name is Akson Kamwong Sai. You can call me Im, in short. I am from a landlocked country called Laos and I am currently a third-year social work student at the National University of Laos. I am currently an internship student at an OPD organization with person with disability. And my special interest is about disability developments, especially in about educations. And I am here representing my deaf community, my deaf sister. And I wish, and I hope that I could gain more studying in the US. Thank you so much for having us today and I would love to, looking forward to learn more from you. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, you class Commissioners. My name is Nguyen Pham from Vietnam. And my special interest is special educations and also inclusion. So I would love to thank you for having us here and I'm looking forward to learn more from you today. Thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Mingalawa. Good morning, everyone. My name is Su. I'm from Myanmar. And I'm currently a second-year international relations student at University of Jhulanggon. And I'm currently work at UCLAP Thunder. And our team work as a, as free class and we provide and we provide support for children and who are not a believer for the F E course. And my special interest is education for my refugee children in my state. And in the future, I would like to provide and access a free education for those and youths. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Sinjiao. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Hong Koi and I'm from Vietnam. My major is English Language Teaching and my special interest is to educating younger, younger people in Vietnam in order to engage more with the mentally impaired children being orphaned in the, being nurtured in the orphanages. I try my best to engage more and more people to come and help me. And thank you for having us today. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Alomwe Mingalawashi. Good morning, everyone. I'm Amy from Myanmar and I graduate with English and also I study liberal arts and science. My special interest is in education and I'm more into inclusive education and also medical issue of the students and also about the early childhood education. And thank you for having me today and thank you, everyone. Thank you, Wisely Program and all.
Thank you and welcome.
Still Val McPherson. I just wanted to say once again, thank you for your warm welcome today. And I would like you to multiply that thank you several times because I hosted my first delegation of international visitors 20 years ago next month and I brought them here. So thank you for 20 years of very warm welcomes.
Well, thank you, Val. And you know, it is, it is absolutely amazing when you all and the ones before you came up and told us about what you are involved in and what you hope to, to be involved in. You are so impressive as young people. And I know that you will succeed and go far because I can just hear it in the voices, the passion that you have. And so we, we love it when you come and visit us. So keep, keep bringing them. But best of luck to you on your ventures. And again, welcome to Douglas County. All right, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I'd just like to add my sentiments of welcome. We are honored to have you here. And hopefully, after our meeting, we'll get a chance to meet and discuss. I just want to point out a couple of things about this level of government. This is essentially the town hall of Douglas County and it's the initial level of democracy in the United States. It's important on a lot of different levels. But what you see here is democracy in action at the, at the very, very local level. And we are honored to have young leaders like you come and visit and exchange ideas with us, particularly in light of the fact that so many of you will probably pursue careers in public service. You should know that this is often a starting level of government involvement for young leaders going forward. As a matter of fact, President Biden's first elected office was to a county board in his home state of Delaware. So this is something that we would love to share with you in greater detail. If you have time later today, we'd like to maybe meet and, and talk a little bit. We'd like to maybe meet and talk a little bit more about this level of government and how it works and find out from you some of the things that work in your country so that we can exchange ideas. Thank you again. It's our honor to have you as our guest.
Commissioner Boyle.
So I want to say really very similar things. When I hear the different types of interests you all have, I mean, you're working for NGOs, law, education, inclusion. I mean, those are really admirable goals to have and amazing, amazing topics to work under. So I, I hear your commitment, I can hear your enthusiasm when you're telling us about what you're doing and what you choose, what you would like to do for the future. I would call you the rock stars of Asia. All right. So the, the world is depending on, on folks like you. I mean, you, you make me feel comfortable about the future and I agree, there's a lot of enthusiasm and we really need more, more youth involvement and we would love to get that at, at levels like, like this too. So any effort you do to, to put yourself out there, it's really risky and really scary sometimes. And sometimes you take, take a few, take a few hits first. You take, but at the same time, any effort that you put forth is, is going to be beneficial. It gives, it's okay to fail a few times before you succeed. So, so I just want to encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too, I want to thank you all for being here and I'm honored to have you here. And there's one real fascinating reason why is because you're all between, generally between the ages of twenty and thirty. And I want to thank Val for continually bringing groups like yours in because it makes me feel so inadequate. Because between twenty and thirty years old, I'm just glad there wasn't Twitter and Facebook and things like that because I, it would have been disastrous. So there is hope. I'm sitting here, I don't know why, but thank you all for everything that you're doing. It's, it's amazing to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you all and welcome. With that, we will move on to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through H. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle.
I would like to take out C to discuss further.
Okay. With that, is the motion and the second are okay to remove C? All right. Please vote.
I have, I have one quick question. Sorry.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. On item G two, Scott Enterprises Inc. to provide Douglas County Corrections Center annex, building partial re-roof, and I don't know, Joe, if you can speak to this. This comes under the heading of kind of a capital project. And I was wondering if we are doing this with general funds or ARPA funds or what's the source of funding on this?
Good morning, Commissioner Jeff McGill, Public Properties. This is out of the capital improvement plan. For, so five-year plan, this roof is up, is twenty-eight years old. We've had leaks throughout the last three or four years, so it's time.
So this is a general fund, not an ARPA fund?
Not an ARPA fund, no.
And I just would, would ask why we're not using ARPA funds on this? We've done so many capital improvement plans throughout the county with ARPA funds, if you know, or Joe, if you know.
Well, basically, right now, we don't have any excess ARPA money that we, you know, we went through the first fifty-five million and then we spent five million, or obligated five million of the second. And right now, we have fifty million earmarked for the mental health initiative. So at this point, there really are no more incremental ARPA funds.
Very good. Thank you.
No other questions or comments. Again, consent agenda, A through H minus C. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll go back to item C, approve agreement between the Douglas County Sheriff's Department and the Millard Public School District to renew the school resource officer's contract at Horizon High School. This is budgeted and Captain Layley, I don't know if he's here or on Zoom, but Commissioner Boyle.
I just have a few questions about it. First is when you look at the agenda items specifically, it talks about the amount of money that Millard Public Schools would be giving the county to, to supplement the income of the school resource officer from the sheriff's office. I, I don't know how much Douglas County has to pay for this, first of all. And then, second of all, with, I, I know our schools need school resource officers and I completely agree with it. The question I, I have is why does Douglas County fund a portion of this and is that it's not a mandated expense? And so when we're looking at, at budget cuts on the county level, it seems to me this would be something that really the, the schools should be covering. So, so I just would like some feedback regarding that.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone here from the sheriff's office that can speak on this? I don't see anyone. Is this something you'd like held over?
Yes, I would. Or not approve it.
Okay. Is that a motion to lay over?
A motion to lay over until next week. Yes.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan to lay this over until next week. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Friend, other. Motion to lay over passes. Commissioner Friend abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
Next, we'll move to citizen comments. Anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Hi. Okay, thank you so much. I'm Nicole LeClaire. I live in Bellevue. So, and I've been coming to meetings since two thousand eighteen on the Juvenile Justice Center. I'm talking today about the mental health facility. So I didn't think I'd still be coming to meetings this many years later. But anyway. So there are thousands behind me, just like the Juvenile Justice Center. So what I say today applies to most everyone that I speak to. So a few weeks ago, I said my job with this is to help people know who you are and to be aware of what is going on in their community and their county because a lot of people do not know. I'm having Dan put this up because I've watched for every meeting that Commissioner Borgeson set up, I believe you set these up, you've not made an announcement of these meetings. The other commissioners have, but you have not. And I hear over and over how passionate you are about mental health and hearing from people, yet these meetings are not announced. And I feel like these meetings are so important. They need to be announced at the beginning and at the middle and at the end. So I want to make sure people at home see the address tonight, six to seven-thirty, Douglas County West Campus, Fitzgerald Building, one-five-three-three-five West Maple Road, Douglas Conference Room. So I don't quite understand how these can be your meetings. And I know you can't respond because it's not on the agenda today, but I'm offering a lot of questions to consider for when you can respond. So you have some time to think about it. So phase two, is it complete? How can it be complete before you've met with people announcing meetings I already mentioned? And what's not being discussed is long-term residential mental health care. And I know at the last meeting, you said, we just don't have the money to do that. Well, to look at mental health, you really need to consider the people, unfortunately, that will not be able to leave facilities, who need help. World Health Organization Mental Health Day was last week and their, their slogan for this year is making mental health and well-being for all a global priority. And I really think we need to do that. And I'm, I'm going, I've been to two of the three meetings. I've watched all of them and I'm watching what's coming from you all, not all of you, is that it's getting slicker and slicker, just like the Juvenile Justice Center and those town halls and not listening to people yet again. And what I watch is the impassioned parents, desperate parents with their kids trying to figure out what to do. And I watched last week, oh, I'm gonna keep that out there for now. So my other question is, who is taking notes at these town halls? How are these notes being incorporated from the people? The idea of co-location, you know, I want to make clear for people, I try to make clear like, your idea is to have a building and you insist that my mom, my family, my loved ones will be separate from those incarcerated with mental health issues, but yet they will be in, in the same building. So you're gonna have people caring for people who are incarcerated and what serious things might be happening there with mental health, go over, maybe care for my mom who's having a mental health issue, you know, my little mom. And you cannot tell me that those people are gonna be able to shut themselves down from being spit on or whatever might be happening over there to going and helping my mom. So I want to know if you're ready to go there, if you're ready to send your loved ones there. And I listened to these lovely people, thank you for all being here today, and how much hope and idealism they have for their lives and for the world. And I heard one of them say, they want to empower thought and generate change. And I love that idea and that's really what I'm here to do. So I just encourage you all to continue to listen to the people. And I, I just feel like the more we all work together, the better everything will be, the less conflict and embattlement like we've had with the Juvenile Justice Center. I don't know, I just, I still believe in the people of Omaha and I hope you all do too.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning. Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I'm very glad that these young students are here today, so close to our elections coming up because I'm going to talk about that again today. Amongst my first item, however, though, is on the rules. I picked up a copy of the rules out front and it appears to me that some rules have been deleted or changed or something without notifying on, on the handout or on the printed agenda that we looked up online. Those rules that seem to be changed have to do with citizen input. I have noticed that recently you refer to each segment of this meeting today by, by topic of equalization or corrections or commissioners. Up until the last couple of weeks, you didn't insert that word. So if anybody could come down at the first section of this meeting and talk about anything as long as it was related to governance of the county, but that's been changed, nothing in the press about it. Okay, next. Last week, I, I did send an email about this. I see the deputies are ready to remove me today. I did send the county an email about this. It could be my own representative and I have not received replies to that either. Acknowledgement from Dan, however, last week, the deputy county sheriff, Wayne Hudson, came walking down here right as I was on the podium and sat down. I thought maybe he was going to escort me out, similar to his coming down here as I was approaching the stadium. It's been done before. But no, but he did get up to refute my comments. However, he made a presentation about his programs as a Douglas County sheriff. But before he said that, he said, oh, I didn't want that to be the last thing the board heard. I was the only person sitting over there, so he must have been referring to me and what I said. Just so happens that either the night before or that same night, he's on the main media television as a write-in candidate for Douglas County Sheriff. So I'm only suggesting that it appears to me that he used me and you for political purposes to announce his campaign. You didn't call him out of order. You've called me out of order for less. You've had me escorted out of here for less. So that's in the record. I did send it to Dan. Okay, next item. Since he did it, I'm gonna open this up. I'm gonna give you the written letter from my candidate as a write-in for governor. Name is Robert J. Borer. He has been out traveling the counties, the small towns, talking to the people, not just Omaha. And he has a feel for what the people feel out there and he put it in writing to each and every one of the state legislators. So this is kind of county governance too because you talk about that and you guys have legislative issues. So I think I'm gonna take a minute to read it because it is citizen involvement. It is a citizen is complaining to his government. Along the lines of our republic, we are a democracy, but we're not a democracy. Our government form is a republic. Okay. All right, I go read it since I'm out of order to go. But it is.
This Mr. Man is.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
On Zoom?
Yep, Luis.
Yeah. Hello.
Hi.
Commissioners, I just wanted to say hello to the new Americans in the chamber. It's nice to see the chamber filled up with folks. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Dan H., Douglas County Clerk. Just to on the town hall, I think my idea had been to, we, we haven't shared the clerk's office, hasn't shared any notes yet because the, my idea was just to kind of keep them all in one document from all four. So I don't know if they'll be, and we, I plan on putting them on the agenda like we do for the committee minutes where you're not voting on them, they're just there to review. And I don't know if it'll be ready by the October twenty-fifth meeting, but probably by November first. So I just wanted to address that part and someone, it appears, left their glasses up here if you're, you're missing them, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to a presentation. We have a presentation from the Nebraska Extension Update with the focus on the Douglas County, Sarpy Counties Four-H Youth Development Program. And with us today is Carrie Miller, Brett's not with us today, oh, there you are, and Tiffany Sessions.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Carrie Miller with Nebraska Extension. I serve as the department head or as we call it with an extension unit leader. So today, I'm here to provide an overview of statewide extension. I've been asked to provide an update on our strategic direction, but the majority of the time will be spent highlighting our Four-H Youth Development Program here in Douglas County with Tiffany and Brett. So to start. So to start, one of Nebraska Extension's values is relevance. We're listening to what Nebraskans are talking about. They're talking about developing a skilled workforce, reducing healthcare costs, creating statewide economic vitality, retaining and attracting young people, leveraging our strengths for sustained success. Using this information, Nebraska Extension on the statewide level has developed strategic direction which will drive our work in the next five years. It aligns with our strengths and our proven areas of expertise within Nebraska Extension, while allowing flexibility for us to meet the needs of the communities in which we work, such as Douglas County. The strategic direction is in three areas and referred to as the big three. Number one, strengthening Nebraska agriculture and food systems, including items such as urban agriculture, improving food access and so on, inspiring Nebraskans and their communities, starting with our youth, all the way through the lifecycle, providing resources and education to all Nebraskans. And third, enhancing the health and well-being of all Nebraskans through our food safety, nutrition, and health programs. Our efforts are in line with the university's systems, including UNO. Extension is a local connection with the university across the state. Extension has a presence in all 93 counties of Nebraska. We bring relevant research and resources directly to Nebraskans. We engage with Nebraskans where they are at. So today, like I said, we're going to talk about our 4-H Youth Development Program. So how does this fit in with Nebraska Extension's strategic direction? And this is just a few of the reasons. Creates a pipeline of talent across the state, encourages entrepreneurship, diversity, and inclusion, engages young people and communities in leadership opportunities in developing interpersonal skills and critical thinking. So with that, I'd like to introduce Brett Kreifels. He's our 4-H Urban Programming Coordinator for Douglas and Sarpy Counties. And he'll provide an overview of Nebraska, yeah, 4-H and Douglas Sarpy Counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, I just want to give you a quick overview of the Douglas Sarpy 4-H Program. Just this last year, we just ended our 4-H calendar year. 4-H calendar year runs from October to September. We reached over 18,000 kids in the Douglas and Sarpy County area with our programming. We are one of the top 4-H programs in the state, along with the other urban population in Lancaster County. And we are very unique in our situation as we cater to the urban population of youth. A lot of people think of 4-H as cows and cookies, but in this case, we do that. That is to our roots, but we also do something much, much more impactful and more inclusive around all the youth of Douglas and Sarpy County. So what we do besides do the county fair stuff, we do STEM and leadership, entrepreneurship, mentoring, agricultural literacy opportunities for all youth of Douglas County. And one unique thing about what our program does is we reach kids where they're at, whether that be through school enrichment activities at the school, during school hours, out of school time with after-school programs, our traditional 4-H club systems and our mentoring systems, workshops, we just did one the other day around fire safety at our office, which is pretty cool. And then our festivals, our ag literacy festivals, our water festivals that bring in a lot of kids and talk about specific topics. One other really cool thing is we are actually in all Douglas County schools, all the school districts in Douglas County, which is pretty cool. We come in and do our school enrichment programs. And I like to say, with our school enrichment and all in our school systems, we supplement what the teachers are teaching. So some programs that we are very involved in, if you've heard about anything, hatching baby chicks in the schools, that's us. That's one of our signature programs that we do. It's very, very impactful. We're working right now with Omaha Public Schools with all the sixth-grade youth to do embryology as part of their curriculum. Another thing that we do is dissections. I was told by a lot of science teachers that they've stopped teaching, they stopped teaching dissections and hands-on learning, science learning opportunities. So that's where we excel, we come in and supplement what the teachers are teaching with a hands-on approach. And then our STEM and Ag literacy festivals. One in particular, our Cooper Farm Zone, where we partner with Omaha Home for Boys, brings in about 400 urban youth to learn about ag and where their food comes from, which is very, very impactful. Now, one we just started a few years ago, we've amped it up a little bit this last year is our Nature Night Walk, held with another, two other partners, Nebraska Game and Parks and Miller School Foundation. So we had about 300 people show up to the Miller School one about a little over a month ago, which is very impactful. It brings a whole new experience to learning at night. We actually go on hikes at night, which is really cool. So that is a really quick snapshot of our program. I'm gonna turn it over to Tiffany Sessions. She's our 4-H STEM educator. And she works exclusively with the Imagine Science Program. Another very impactful program that is a summer program, and I'm gonna let Tiffany talk more about that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tiffany Sessions. As Brett said, I am the 4-H STEM educator in the Douglas Sarpy office. Maybe I should go to the next slide. All right. So much like Brett talked about, we do a lot with school enrichment and all that good stuff. But another part of my position is managing the Imagine Science Program. Imagine Science, for those of you that are not familiar with the program, is actually a national initiative. And it is a collaborative effort joined by four of the largest youth development organizations in the nation to address the deficit of STEM workers. And so those four youth organizations are the National 4-H Council, Girls Inc., Boys and Girls Clubs of America, and YUSA. And so in 2015, they decided to roll this out as a pilot in three areas. Omaha, Nebraska, of course, was one. Douglas, or, sorry, Dallas, Texas, and Orange County, California were the other two. And so we've been going strong since 2015, reaching over 5,000 youth. The bulk of our programs do happen in the summer, but we do and have kind of expanded our programs where we're actually serving in the school enrichment realm with some of the programs that we offer as they do align with standards. And one of the key focuses of Imagine Science, since by the time that youth reach ninth grade, about 60% lose interest in STEM. And so one of the focuses is making sure that we get them and we get them young. So in Imagine Science, our focus is reaching underserved youth. That's low-income minority and female youth between the grades of four and eight. And so we have some data statistics there. Another really cool aspect of the Imagine Science Program, which I love and is near and dear to my heart, is that we create a career pathway. So the way that this program is designed is, of course, the curriculum is developed for fourth to eighth-grade youth. However, we train and onboard teen teachers. And they are kind of introduced into the world of informal education. And it also allows them to explore the STEM area that we're focused on in that particular program. We also hire interns, or what we call STEM mentors, to help in the classroom, guide the teen teachers, and take a leadership role in that area. These interns are in fact majors in the specific STEM program area that we're focusing on in the particular programs that we offer in Imagine Science. And last but not least, we always try to have a career aspect connected to the program. And so we work with professors, we work with those that are in corporate fields to kind of hone in and share their experiences with the youth and really engage them in what could be. So that is Imagine Science, I guess, in a nutshell there. There we go. So Build a Hut, that's why I'm here today. Build a Hut is an amazing program, and believe it or not, it all stemmed from a meeting that I had about a year ago with a young man, Bouitut, who is the CEO of AquaAfrica. And his work that he's doing in South Sudan is amazing. He went back to his home village and he wanted to make sure that they had access to clean water right there in their village. He also is working on off-grid energy systems, so solar panels and things like that. And so from the meeting, he really just wanted to share his story with youth and wanted to do a competition. It was an idea in his head. And so of course, with 4-H being a positive youth development organization and having all of the resources of the university at our hands, our fingertips, I said, why not create a camp that will prepare these youth for a culminating event, which would be the competition? And so from that moment on, in August, I literally got groups of professors together that had various expertise in construction, architectural engineering, solar engineering, and civil engineering, particularly in water transportation and filtration. And we worked together to create the curriculum for this six-week camp. In this camp, the youth were able to learn about blueprints and go to the Peter Keywood Institute to use their lab to create blueprints that resemble what they would actually make in their huts that they would build. They were also able to use various tools like handsaws and things like that to create mini huts, which would be, in fact, on a smaller scale, a replica of what the hut would look like at competition. So that kind of gave them insight on what they would be doing. The next two weeks focused on solar engineering are first, learning about how solar panels work and all of that good stuff behind that, learning about circuitry and creating different circuits that worked in different ways. So we did a lot of exploration with that. And then civil engineering, I love the water transportation activity where the kids actually get to see what it's like to live in South Sudan. So if you couldn't turn on a faucet and have water at your fingertips, what would it be like to travel long distances moving water to and fro? And so they had to work in teams to do a water relay, which is a really cool activity, and they were also able to do some filtration. Of course, these six weeks of camp would then culminate in a competition. So we served six or seven community organizations, two of them actually paired. So we served six sites over the course of the summer, about 78 kids. But the top five, because each of those weeks had different competitions where they could accumulate points, the top five from each of those camps would then be selected as the competition teams. So we had them come to the Millwork Commons where our AquaAfrica partners kind of led a competition prep day. So the youth were able to do some work with tools that they would use for the day. They had to learn about governance and working together to think about, do we want to have a shared water source? What would this cost us? Things like that. And then they had to think through how they wanted to use their budget and the supplies that they would use then at the competition. So those pictures that you see are what the kids kind of did that day. And then on my right there, with our young people wearing their worker vests, those are our teen teachers and interns. And I'm proud to say we actually had a male. It's kind of hard to get a young man to join. So here's an example, or some pictures from our competition day. And you see the kids working hard. The huts actually were four and a half feet tall. Me being short stature, I was able to stand in a hut, which was pretty cool. So you see some teams standing by their huts. You also see towards the middle, that middle picture there, Commissioner Borgesid, who was able to join us for the competition day along with some of the professors that we worked with to develop the camp and competition. And then we were able to award partnership for kids with $1,000 towards their STEM programming, as well as $50 Amazon gift cards for that team. But everybody got to leave a winner because all the other participating teams were awarded $25 Amazon gift cards as well. And then you see myself, Lori Cameron, and Erica Murray, who is my co-pilot on this program, kind of rooting everyone on. How am I doing on time?
You're all right.
All right. So I did embed a video of our competition because it was amazing. Oh, yay, it works. Oh, maybe not.
Oh, no.
Okay. Let's see if I can go back here. Can I stop this and maybe go into? I'm gonna stop share just for a second here. How about this? Maybe not. Yeah, we need some tech assistance. Yeah, so I did put the link in the notes. Okay, and then. Okay, cool. Is that right or? Sorry, tech issues. All right, I'll be person one here. Okay, hopefully this works. Yay! Awesome. Okay, let's get us back on. I apologize, people on Zoom, I'm pretty sure you couldn't see that, but. Is this back on Zoom here? Thank you. Okay. And then, would you like me to reshare? Okay, cool. All right. Oh, maybe not. Okay, have patience with me, folks. We'll get there. All right. So like I said, it took a lot of stakeholders, partners to make this happen. So this slide here just really shows how much went into this. Of course, we had five curriculum writers, two associate professors of practice in the UNL Durham School of Architecture, Engineering, and Construction, who helped to write the curriculum for that. We had John Hay, who is actually an extension associate in the Biological Systems Engineering Department, who helped with our solar engineering. And then we had Troy Gilmore, Beckery Shurman. I know you don't know these folks, but they are wonderful. And they helped with the water transportation and filtration curriculum. We had four local extension 4-H staff who helped with the day-to-day operations of the camp. And in the middle, you'll see some of the partners that we were able to work with this summer. And some of the sponsors, of course, AquaAfrica, the Peter Keywood Foundation provided us with funds to be able to make this happen this summer. And then one thing that I did not speak about was during the competition and competition prep, we were able to get different engineers to mentor each team. And so they were there on site as well, helping them through the competition. That's Build a Hut. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Yes, there are a couple. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you, and thanks for this. I'm a big supporter of Extension. We're one of your big sponsors. And so I'm excited to hear this program, particularly the impact that it has on environmental applications of engineering. I mean, the future is all about the transition to renewable energy, wind, solar, geothermal, and other forms of renewable energy that's gonna happen in your generation and the generations to follow if we're gonna save this climate from disaster. So having this program is, I think, an extremely valuable tool to get young people to focus on the importance of environmental engineering. Embracing nature, I know, is a big part of the 4-H mission. And it all goes hand in hand with this ecologically responsible message that you're bringing here today and you're bringing to young people in our community. So I want to thank you for that. This is really refreshing, great news. And I encourage you to keep it up. One thing I didn't see in there is the Douglas. One thing I didn't see in there is Douglas County engineers. We have a whole office of engineers, and you might wanna include them because Douglas County supports the mission that you're on. Uh, in going forward, there are civil engineers out there that I think would be interested in participating in this going forward. But thanks so much. This is really, really great. And thank you. Thanks 4-H.
Thank you. I'm definitely taking note of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Tiffany and Brett Carey, thanks for the information. I uh, I, I guess I learned a lot of this stuff in, in a previous life, and Governor Johans used to, used to harp on, on stuff like this, that. It's refreshing that there is an Extension office in Douglas County. And what I wanna make sure uh, that people understand, particularly in Douglas County, and particularly people that are living in Omaha and don't realize, you know, how valuable it is, Nebraska's economy is predominantly driven by ag. Nebraska's entire economy is predominantly driven by ag. In short, at least seventy-five percent um, of our economy is driven by agribusiness. And in terms of cash receipts, California, the state of California is number one. The state of Iowa is number two. The state of Nebraska is number three. Cash receipts, we have one point nine million people in this state. We are eighteenth, as of, in twenty-twenty-one, we were eighteenth in the nation in uh, the amount of farms that people actually owned, possessed, worked and, and dealt with, with the feds and all of the things they have to deal with. Based on the fact that we only have one point nine million people, eighteenth in the nation is pretty good. That's not per capita. We're eighteenth in the nation in, in farms in this state. With that in mind, I mean, I, I, it's not really a trick question. I wanna make sure that the Extension office in Douglas County, educationally, I, I'm comfortable that it is, so I'm just making a statement, that it, it directly reflects that economic impact that Nebraska has on this nation and this world. We're, we're feeding the world. We're third in, we're third in the nation in cash receipts. The state of Nebraska is feeding the world. And again, the only states that are ahead of us are California and Iowa. And Iowa's got triple the amount of people we have, and California's got how many more? So I thank you for the work. I, I don't want the mission to get lost. I think people in Douglas County need to understand how valuable that, that, not just the Extension office is, but that type of work. A chick being born, a, a cow being fed, um, how important it is to people in Douglas County. Because if seventy-five percent, finally, if seventy-five percent of the jobs in this state are being created by agribusiness, that's a majority of the ones in Douglas County too. And before ConAgra left, who knows what it was. But it's still a lot. So I, I just wanna thank you for the work you're doing. Keep it up, and don't lose your focus. Don't lose your mission, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Yep, thanks for this. And I think after this, I think I wanna learn how to build a hut now too.
You can come join us.
Come join us? Do you let grownups do it?
Yes.
Great. And so I'm just kinda curious, and I've got a more serious question later, but what happens to the huts after they're built?
So we actually, we're going to have one here, I believe. Um, of course, uh, we're thinking future, right? And what we could potentially do. So there's a couple of different things. Um, one would be that we would actually have them maybe uh, sent to Kenecko um, for people to kinda come and see. And then once we get along, uh, further down the line, I wanna actually do some work where we're doing the community some good. So there we got civic engagement. And so we've just started a blooming partnership with Metro Community College, but they build tiny homes. And so I think that's a great way to do some service learning and civic engagement for our youth, really applying what they're learning.
You kinda stole my thunder. I was gonna ask, my next question was gonna be, do you have relationships after these, these kids learn these skills with community colleges or with universities in order to do something practical like that? So, um, so yeah, I think that's, that's the goal of these programs. So do you know if there are like, cor- corporate relationships that occur where these kids can actually be guaranteed STEM types of jobs? Is there, have you gone that far with this?
I have not gone that far yet. Um, but the people that we're working with in terms of like the mentors that we bring on board to spend two days with the kids for competition prep and competition are definitely ends. Again, um, we had a teen teacher, I think a couple teen teachers, whose parents were engineers in either civil engineering, um, or construction engineering. And so I think those ways would be really good to use the students that we have and that we bring on board and just kinda see where things go. But I definitely really, really want to keep that pipeline going and making sure that at each level, the kids see where I can be next. Um, so that's definitely something. We did have the interns uh, sit down and have lunch with our mentors, and they got some cards, and there were some things that were started with that, so yeah.
Good. I know there's a lot of work with the, there's a lot of work with the unions and the trades in order to, to kinda get kids right at that age group you're talking about, kinda that, that middle school age, because that's when you can really turn them, turn them on to a field, and they're very engaged to learn. And hands-on learning is so much better than bookwork, as we all know. So, so I think I, I just, I'm very encouraged by programs like this. I think anything we can do to take, to, to get kids interested in something that's really, it's really fun and hands-on and to show them that there can be a future in something like that. And it's not always just going straight to university, the type of college. But the other part I like is, is the fact that it can be very practical. And if we can use those skills to, to turn into something like, like the tiny home projects, I think um, that's, that's where uh, organizations like, like Extension can really solidify their value. Is to say, this is what we do, and look at what we have as a result. It's visual, it's practical, it's something that, that government can really get engaged in and on board with. So thanks for what you're doing.
I agree. Thank you.
No. Commissioner Rogers?
The question's not for you, but I wanna clarify. Uh, the first gentleman that came up, uh, he said, I just wanted to clarify, are you, did you say you were in, are you in all the school districts or all the schools?
All the school districts.
Okay.
In Douglas County. Yep. We're still trying to make it in all the schools, just not quite there yet. That's the goal. That's the goal.
Commissioner Boyle?
Sorry, I forgot one more thing too. On there, you also mentioned uh, health and wellness component. I didn't hear any mention of that in the presentation, the health and wellness component of Extension.
Well, we were specifically speaking with our 4-H Youth Development Program, but they do teach upon health and wellness, um, food preparation, which, if you don't know how to prepare food, sometimes you can't prepare nutritious meals. So that is part of our 4-H program, but we do have our um, our federally funded FNEP and SNAP Ed programs reaching low-income audiences in Douglas and Sarpy Counties. We've been doing that since nineteen sixty-nine. Um, and one of the programs within that is our Double Up Food Bucks, a SNAP incentive program um, at various retailers in Omaha. So that's just snapshotting one of our, our programs. Um, and also within our food nutrition and health and wellness, we definitely take in consideration mental health, um, provide resources for help along those areas. We train our staff in how to identify um, mental health emergencies and get people help with referrals and things like that. So bringing all together the wellness aspect.
Good deal. All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, no other lights? Again, thank you so much for being here today and showcasing not only um, Extension, but specifically the um, the project that, that you all did this summer. Um, it was pretty amazing to see how the excitement of the kids um, in, you know, like when the water worked, you know, and it, that, that was pretty, pretty cool. So, um, again, thank you for all you do um, for us here in Douglas County and across the state, so.
Thank you, and thank you for your support. We appreciate it. Thank you.
With that, we will move to committees. We have, the first is the finance, the budget report as presented. Item two is the monthly fee report as presented. And item three, approval of a resolution authorizing the award of a hundred and fifty thousand to a nonprofit Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education to assist in the funding, the construction of the Nebraska Museum of Industry, Industry and Labor, which will be devoted to the history of Nebraska's workforce and serve as a catalyst for economic development and job creation in Douglas County. This was brought to us by Commissioner Garcia and is being funded through Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Kavanaugh's allocation of ARPA funds. Is there a motion to approve? A motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, I'm happy to co-sponsor this uh, resolution with Commissioner Garcia. This is um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, towards a, a program that um, is in my district. Um, I think Commissioner Garcia's dedicated fifty thousand of his uh, ARPA allocation. I have a hundred thousand of uh, my ARPA allocation to allow for the Nebraska Museum of Industry and Labor, described as a preeminent institution devoted to the history of Nebraska's workforce and the ever-growing relationship between labor and business leadership in the region. This is a much larger program that um, is gonna involve the construction at Sixtieth and um, Grover Street of a facility with a total program cost of four point two million dollars. And we're excited about this. It's in conjunction uh, with the um, Omaha Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO, and the William Brennan Institute of Labor Studies at UNO. I have a particular personal interest in this, as William Brennan was my mentor uh, and employer and early in my career when I worked for the AFL-CIO. And as president of the Nebraska AFL-CIO and a state senator at the same time, uh, was a giant of organized labor in our state. It's important, I think, on a number of different levels, but democracy essentially needs organized labor. Unions are essential to the functioning of democracy. And uh, in our society, fortunately, right now, we're seeing a renaissance in labor organizing, and I hope that this helps foster that, because the way forward for the living wage uh, and many other social justice issues uh, has been led by organized labor. And that's a big reason why I so passionately support this issue, uh, initiative. And I'm proud to have uh, the, the relationship with the William Brennan Institute for Labor Studies, uh, named after a man who dedicated his entire life to organizing men and women and uh, pushing forward the uh, standard of living of working America on many, many levels. So this is a great opportunity for us to um, use our ARPA funding uh, to help stimulate our economy, help organized labor uh, do its mission uh, to foster living wages and other needed social changes and to establish a living history, memory of our community, so we understand who we are and where we've been and can go forward uh, with an informed attitude towards the future. I'm just delighted to have this opportunity to do this, and I know that Commissioner Garcia is excited as well um, to join in this initiative.
No for Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Well said by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Um, just wanted to add uh, key provisions that this tackles in regards to ARPA law and what is allowed by ARPA is tackling uh, getting employment for those who are unemployed and underemployed. And this will specifically train people in the trades and get them into good-paying jobs that are in the trades, which is one of the main reasons why I'm supporting this. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Um, I don't know if there's a representative. I talked to Jim Vecchio, who's the CEO of the Nebraska Museum of Industry and Labor yesterday. Jim? I'm glad you're here today. Would you like to add something?
No, I'm just listening. I think you're so, uh, you're very articulate in what we do and what we're looking for, so I appreciate that. Uh, all the commissioners, I'm Jim Vecchio. Uh, I'm the newly appointed, uh, well, it's six and a half months now for uh, the CEO for the Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education. So uh, we uh, as you know, this is one of our passions, uh, is trying to address some of the uh, skilled labor workforce in Nebraska. Uh, I think we've done a great job with that, with uh, you know, some of our project reset and the educational tools that we have available for, for kids at the center, trying to uh, address the skill gap when it comes to uh, you know, today's youth. Uh, we have a large number of people that, that are in the skilled trades that are probably gonna be retiring here soon. And, and uh, we're gonna have a huge shortfall if we don't address that here fairly quickly. Uh, I think this is one step in the direction that allow us to educate these people and bring them more, uh, a little bit more involved in the process. And you know, statistically, they say that ninety-seven percent of Americans believe museums are an educational asset to the community. So uh, I, you know, you, you think ninety-seven percent, I mean, a small, I knew, don't agree with that, but I think for, I was surprised to hear that we had that much support when it comes to museums and their role in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other lights? There was a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to, and this is a mistake on my part, this item should be under Child and Youth, but it's um, discussion, nothing under Administrative Services. Under Child and Youth, it was a discussion action on naming the new youth center facility. And I put this on there just for throwing it out there as we um, come to the uh, completion next year of our Justice Center project, um, whether we want to think about um, renaming our Douglas County Youth Center to something else. And I threw out there a couple of ideas just to get um, brains starting to work um, as to whether or not, one, we want to, or two, um, along the lines of, I think, a little bit more of a positive aspect of things. And so um, Douglas County Youth Support Center, or Douglas County Youth Rehabilitation and Support Center. And so again, I, I just put this out there for um, discussion, if there's even the will to want to do that. And if so, um, what are thoughts about those two um, ideas moving forward, or if not? So with that, I'll open it up for any comments from anybody. And again, the purpose is, I think, instead of Douglas County Youth Detention Center, if we had a little bit more of a positive name, um, that would help with the whole emphasis of what we're trying to do with the whole Justice Center project, in that positive enlightenment of what kids and their families are going through and utilizing our juvenile services. Commissioner Rogers?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The, the only thing I would add is probably uh, instead of Youth Rehabilitation and Support Center, it's Youth Rehabilitation and Family Support Center. I, I just say that because um, the, the word rehabilitation, family are key in respects to uh, the true intent of our, our youth system here in the state is rehabilitative. And the emphasis was always put on there is that you can't just treat the child, you need to treat the family. So I would just add Youth Rehabilitation and Family Support Center.
Good point. All right. Anyone else have any ideas or comments? The Douglas County Youth Rehabilitation and Family Support Center. So he inserted "family" into, in front of "support center."
I think that's good. But would it, would there be a way to shorten it a little bit? That's the only thing I'm concerned about. I like the first way you said it, Commissioner Borgeson.
The Youth Center Support Center?
No.
Douglas County Youth Support Center? The, the one I said after that was Douglas County Youth Rehabilitation and Support Center. And Chris just added "family." And Chris just added family.
Yep.
Which was a good point because we have emphasized the family participation in all of this.
I agree with the family.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah, I typically don't get too fixated on names, but I'll give my quick two cents while it's on the agenda. Out of all the options discussed, I'm kind of leaning toward a mesh of what the three of you have said, something along the lines of Youth and Family Support Center. Takes out a word, so makes it slightly shorter, Commissioner Morgan, and still incorporates the family and the youth part. The reason why in my, I guess, option that I'm proposing is I'm taking out the rehab part. Of course, in the juvenile justice system, it's not a system that penalizes people. It's there to support them. In some cases rehabilitate, yes, indeed. But the word rehabilitation, at least in my mind at this moment, can, has the connotation that, you know, something's wrong with that specific individual. We, we need to rehabilitate them, rehabilitate them. Though sometimes, you know, our youth get caught up in these systems, not necessarily because something's wrong with them specifically, but something's wrong with the structures and systems around them. And due to those circumstances, they, they get caught up in these systems. So, you know, out of all these options, I would lean towards kind of something along the lines of Youth and Family Support Center. We are going to support them in some capacity. Sometimes it is rehabilitation of some kind, but I would kind of generalize it up one level.
Okay, I like that. Any other ideas? Is everybody okay with that idea? I do like shortening it and taking that rehab out. I do like that. You, you okay with that? All right. So Douglas County Youth, Youth and Family Support Center? Okay?
That's good.
Okay, all right. It does say that we can take action today. Is there comments from the public on this?
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. Good morning. Good to see all you guys so bright and early. I'm Jaquila Yarborough, founder of Compete Technologies, a data analytics company located on 24th Street.
What's it called again?
Compete Technologies.
Okay.
We also have a nonprofit arm called the Compete Institute. Talk about shorting our name. Compete Institute of Socioeconomic Policy and Education. And we are strategically located in 24, on 24th Street because of those most impacted generally come from the surrounding zip codes. I'm a large proponent of keeping the name of the Youth Detention Center the same because I don't want us to get away from what, what is actually happening in these facilities, in this facility. Essentially, and we can play with the numbers here, but over 80% of those children who are detained, and that is what they are, they are detained. If you cannot leave, you are detained, are black kids. They're not orange, they're not purple, they're not green, they are black. The problem is only 11.5% of the population in this great state are black people. I think that changing the name kind of really softens the blow. It does, to your point, it does sound a lot nicer to change the name of a, of a youth facility. And my hope is that we continue to expand the resources and prevention efforts. However, I think that changing the name really detracts from the severity of what the youth will be experiencing as they are detained. And so I'm a huge proponent of keeping the name the same, but I support whatever decision we make today.
After correct, I was corrected and I need to say it's the Douglas County Youth Center, not the Douglas County Youth Detention Center. So it's just the Douglas County Youth Center right now.
Correct, and, and.
I just misspoke when I, you didn't.
That's okay. That's, and I, I appreciate that. I just, I really wanted just spoken on to the record what is happening in our, particularly in the state of Nebraska. But what, what has been going on in Douglas County, particularly in, in our district, is, is unheard of, especially for the length of time in which it's been allowed to happen. I actually have a picture here. An educator, a lot of what we do is educating. But I took, I went to the, went to our local Walmart and they must have been restocking, but half the dairy, more than half the dairy was, was gone. And I told my kids, I said, if you take all the black kids out of youth detention in Douglas County, that's what it would look like. It would look very scarce. And so I am a little less concerned with the naming and more about the action, but I don't think we should jazz it up and make it sound like something that it's not because I don't want us to lose sight of the severity of the issues our children of color are facing.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on the naming?
Hi again, Nicole Claire, Serpice County. But I probably live closer down, to downtown than some of you out west. So again, lots behind me. And I just want to remind people about the town hall meeting tonight on the mental health subject because these are related. They are connected. You're really creating, I'm going to go backwards a little bit, but you're really creating kind of a jail alley downtown. So welcome to downtown Omaha. Here's our jails. Businesses have already closed around what you built. Just want to remind you of the key words we heard over and over about this facility, that there would be no shackles, best practices, trauma-informed, co-location. Co-location has become three locations. The promises of free parking for the families, these were promises. Green space on the roof, reflected or borrowed light. The reality is there's no laundry, no kitchen in this facility. There's lots of glass for the judge and lawyer side of this. The most recent number I've heard is still 80 kids. We watched the building grow from 48 beds to 64. We watched the numbers be manipulated. Kids are being sent home. We ask over and over what the programs are to prevent the kids from being there in the first place. King County, which is often referred, their Juvenile Justice Center, was fought by citizens, which was never announced here. There was always talked about how great King County was, but that was fought for at least six and a half years by the public. This is named Patricia H. Clark Children and Family Justice Center. By the way, they were sued by Northwestern University. So you might just want to make sure whatever you decide to name this is not already being used. I recommend using some of the names involved in this plan. HGR, Bruce Carpenter, Burlington Capital, Mike Yanni, Georgia Chola, Susie Buffett and Sherwood, the $10 million seat on the board with Susie Buffett and Sherwood. So maybe a Chola, Susie Buffett, Sherwood, Carpenter, Yanni Juvenile Justice Center. Paul Cohen, I don't know if you're aware, at the beginning of September, was on the news talking about how the courthouse is already, is, is too small. And they're already studying that, about what they're going to have to do for that. And one of the options of the four is to actually decommission the courthouse. So here you have Juvenile Justice Center, maybe possibly a decommissioned courthouse nearby. So I think that's really interesting. And that could possibly cost $336 million. So I'm wondering if 132 million for this, without a vote of the people, the largest fiscal expenditure in Douglas County history. I'm wondering if this was a test to see if 336 million could happen. We brought up maybe moving all this to 76th and Dodge because there's much more room there. That's more the middle of town, but no one listened. Anyway, my mom, who couldn't be here, who was very involved in this as well, but I love her idea for this, is maybe just call that building the program because that's what we often heard, I mean, from Commissioner Chris Rogers. We actually heard the quote of, "The building is the program." So that's an idea. I know I'm challenging you right now, but I just really want to remind people of what this has been and all the, you know, sweet words for it. It's still not being addressed of what we need to do for the kids. Like we've said all along, this is $132 million spent before one child and one family is helped. And now we're looking at 55 million before anyone with mental health issues or families are helped. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you, and, and thanks for this discussion. I think this is an important discussion. It might behoove us to take a little time rather than rushing into naming something after 20 minutes of discussion, to look around the country, see what other jurisdictions are doing. We're not alone here. There's probably good information that could be had to call this what it is. I, I'm particularly struck by, you know, the comments of, tell it like it is. This is a detention center for young people who are overwhelmingly minority young people. Our jails are full of majority populations of minority people. This is a problem that needs to be recognized and dealt with in this country, in this county. Because every time we get a report from the correction center and every time we get a report from the youth center, I ask the question, what's our minority population? And it's always a majority, 60, 70% majority-minority population. I think that's wrong. I think there's root causes for that that need to be looked into. And when we're having the discussion about naming what is essentially one of these detention centers, which is majority-minority population, we should have that discussion. We shouldn't hide it under a, you know, some nice sounding adjectives. So, I mean, I, I really appreciate the suggestions that have been heard here today, but it might be good to look around the nation and see what other similar facilities are named to get us some feel for what's best practices out there. So I, I would urge us to maybe take some time on this rather than rush to naming it today. And sure, get down to the root causes of these minority-majority populations of our jails. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me, let me put my remarks in context by saying, I respect, except if times get foolish and I feel like I need to say something. Anybody that comes up here, express their opinion or more than open to do that. And, and it welcomes. And nobody, absolutely nobody is, feels threatened or challenged in that. But, I mean, yes, it's been said that, I mean, the question of kids of color or people of color in that facility has been asked for over 30 years. Just the question's been asked. Now, till, till recently, action's been put there and people have been trying to change it. Now, if you want to really get into naming, there, there's a smart remark that I can, I can say on the name, but I'm, I'm not going to go there because the fact is words matter. That's why we don't call adults coming back into society now ex-offenders. We call them returning citizens. So in all due respect to what was said up here at the podium, I'm not going to fight the last war and you can spend your time fighting the last war. The point is, and I want to clarify, is no businesses have been closed because of that. All of that chatter happened to some degree, none have been closed. The only business that was closed was the Flatiron and that closed because of COVID. And the facility is opening back up now. And then in some respect, as far as numbers being manipulated, there's, there's no numbers being manipulated. We've been talking hard truth and reality to bring awareness to the issue. So I think no other facility over the country, there's no, if, if the board wants to delay, that's fine, but there's no need to delay. I've seen several of these facilities across the country and the names range from what we've been talking about today, or they've been given to people that had significant impacts on the system. So to sit here today and fight the last war, you can take your potshots, but the real deal is trying to put the thing in a position to move the whole system forward. So the real thing I want to dispute is taking potshots at business closing, which has not happened, and nobody up here has condoned or would condone manipulation of numbers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. No other questions or comments? What is the will of the board? It has been suggested for the naming part that it be Douglas County Youth and Family Support Center?
If the board's willing, I would recommend Commissioner Garcia's change of the Youth and Family Support Center.
Is there a second?
So you're making the motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
Madam Chair, can we repeat that again?
Douglas County Youth and Family Support Center. Did you get?
Uh, give me a moment here, so I can change it on there.
Any comment you want to make?
Good luck to you all. Thank you for being here.
I'm having trouble changing the agenda right now, but I guess with the item that you vote on, it'll just, it's to approve the naming of it as the Douglas County Youth and Family Support Center.
Correct.
All right. Ready when you are.
Okay, please vote.
Motion passes six to one. Commissioner Kavanaugh abstaining. All our commissioners voting yes.
Okay, thank you.
Rush to naming this without a full public discussion or researching what is available around the nation, taking into consideration some of the public comments that we heard here today.
Next, we'll move to human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. And then item two legislative issues. And just to, after this board meeting, we will have an HR Resource Committee meeting, which we will be talking about our 2023 legislative priorities. And then we have at one o'clock, the Child and Youth Services Committee. Both of those are in room 903. And the agenda item for that is our Douglas County Youth Center Home Program. And that's all on the agenda for the board is that we do have need for an executive session for labor negotiations. Is there a motion to go into executive session for labor negotiations? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.